Excellent. Can everyone hear me online now? Okay, excellent. Well, thank you all for attending. We've got a great group in here today, which is fantastic. And so we'll just go ahead and get this meeting started for we'll do our call to order in roll call here. So I'm calling the meeting, our City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting on Thursday, September 22 at 1:07 PM. Going from here, we'll do a roll call. We'll start online with with those online. So we'll start with Aaron.
Hi, my name is Aaron Rivers.
Amanda, are you online too? All right, I think Amanda, if you're online, just unmute yourself and just but in the meantime, we'll go ahead and go around the table, starting next to Lisa.
Oh, hi, Carl Burnett. Good to be here.
John Healan, howdy.
Nicholas Raiden.
Corey Sparks.
I'm Barb Campbell. I'm the council liaison.
And Ashley Schaefer.
And then from the city, we have Lisa and Teresa. Excellent. All right. And just kind of a housekeeping note here. Just as you're when you're, you know, state your name before you start speaking, just so people can identify the speaker. That way, you know, for whether it be visual or hearing, people can identify who's making a motion or speaking going forward. So I'll try to do my best with that, too. All right. So now that we've gone through item number one, we'll go through our land acknowledgement. I'll turn it over to Lisa.
The City of Bend Land Acknowledgement reads as follows. We would like to acknowledge the beautiful land known as Bend north of the Columbia River is the original homeland of the Confederate Tribes of Warm Springs. The Confederate tribes ceded the land in the Treaty of 1855 while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. The Walla, the Wana Lama, Wasco, and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to note that the Klamath Trail ran through the this region to the Great Salilo Falls Trading Grounds. This trade, this trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It is our hope that the guests continue to honor and care for this land.
Excellent. Thank you, Lisa. We'll move on to our approval of minutes from our what is that? That would be our August 25, 2002 meeting. And so I'll open up the floor for any comments, questions, or concerns on those minutes.
The document looked a little funky when I opened it, but it could have been my computer just not having Word. Like the bottom was like all squished together.
Yeah, next time.
All right, any other comments or questions on them? If not, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion to approve the minutes.
A second. Ashley Schaefer.
John Healan.
All those in favor of approving the August 22 meeting minutes? Say aye or raise hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, our minutes have passed. So now we'll go on to the public comment period. I believe there were a couple people online.
There's one.
There's one, okay.
Sammy, you want to unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Well, I had no comments. I was just, I decided I'd like to join as a guest. I have been to Quebec meetings before in the past, a couple of them in person. But doing it via Zoom is much more convenient for me. And I just, I'm interested. We had someone at our COCA meeting recently talked about Quebec a little bit and about some new faces. So I was interested in joining. Thanks.
Glad to have you.
Thank you. And no other public on the line. Okay, perfect. All right. So we'll move on to item number five on our agenda, which is the Quebec business. And so we'll start with our October meeting. The October meeting will be on the 27th. And it'll be here in the council chambers, but the timing of that will be from 12 PM to 1:30 PM that day, so that we can have use of the council chambers because it was booked at our regular scheduled time. So and then also due to Thanksgiving, our Quebec meeting for that month will be held on November 17. And that'll also be at the same time, 12 PM to 1:30 PM. And for the same reasons on that. And then also our December 24 meeting, we will, there will be no meeting on that date. And so we will take a winter break until our January meeting, which will likely also be at the same time as 12 PM to 1:30 PM. So we can talk a little bit more about that in our roundtable discussion if we want as well. And then coming up here at our next meeting, we will also have a chair and vice chair nominations. And so just kind of think about that as we move to that, that'll be the October meeting will be my last as chair. And so if anyone does have any questions about the chair position or anything like that, you know, feel free to reach out to me by email or phone. I'm available to help answer any questions or anything like that. So.
We will, you will vote that day as well.
Okay. Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah. The nominations will take place as well as voting on that October 27 meeting. Any, any other Quebec business? John?
No.
Any other members? Any Quebec business? Okay, we'll move on to our next item, which is the welcoming week reports. And so I'll open this up to any Quebec members for that.
Oh, yeah, I attended the welcoming week opening. I saw Barb there. It was very nice to get out there and meet people in the community that are interested in welcoming week, especially the I forget his name, the city employee who helped organize it that week. Yes. And I was able to talk to a few people about Quebec and about what we're doing. And so it was nice to get our name out there.
Anyone else? Did anyone else attend any other welcoming week?
Did you go to the, end up going to the Fathers Group thing on Saturday?
I did. So I attended the opening, which was at the Latino Community Foundation. And yeah, I thought that was a great event, especially having participated since the very beginning when opening was in a conference room. This was outdoors. The weather was perfect. There was music and dancing and food. It was really nice to see the evolution of that. And then, yes, specifically, I also was able to go to the event hosted by the Fathers Group, which is another just marvelous thing that other community groups are participating in hosting events. They had a panel discussion with elected and staff from the school district and the city and the sheriff's department. It was a really interesting discussion. A lot of questions for the schools came up in particular. So it was really great of the superintendent himself was there to answer questions, which I thought was really nice.
Oh, yeah. I also went to the Affordable Housing Welcoming Week get together. It was basically just an info session on opportunities or options out there for people. Of course, there's not enough, but it's something. And Manager King was there, too. So that was nice to actually finally meet him in person instead of Zoom.
Cool. Excellent. Any other reports before we move on to the next item? All right, we'll move on to item number seven, which is our Quebec Strategic Plan Discussion. We've got about 30 plus minutes, plus or minus for this discussion. And so there's a couple of different documents. We've got our strategic plan with the objectives, background, plan development process, and then also our strategic plan priorities. Anything else, Teresa or Lisa, that you want to mention before we dive into this?
You do have 10 more minutes that you can add upon.
Oh, 10 more minutes. Okay, so about 40 minutes now. Okay, perfect.
And we could get more time.
Okay, excellent. Cool. So what I'll do is I'll just kind of rehash our strategic plan priorities just for the group. And then we can as we go, as I mentioned this, we can go along, have questions and discussions, or I can go through them all first, and then we can go start from the top. So the first one is creating a culture of accessibility within the City of Bend organization. And so that is, part of that is to ask the city to provide training to the engineers, the planners, inspectors, and developers about disability equity ADA and making things accessible. So that's one of our first items on that strategic plan priorities. The second one is creating an accessible community where we create a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce here in Bend to provide education for businesses about accessibility in the right of way, parking, the path of travel, as well as requirements for accessible setup inside the store, including all the restrooms as well. And then there's also part of that creating an accessible community is general education, educational informative goal, and decide at a later time what exactly this would look like. So investing time in communication, education component for the community. And then our third item with that was improving transportation and infrastructure. And so partnering with the Bend Metropolitan Planning Organization, otherwise known as MPO, to provide feedback on the use of the American Rescue Plan, the ARPA funds. And then also working to incentivize local transportation providers to make more accessible vehicles available. That was a mouthful. I think going through that, we can start to go through item number one, which was creating a culture of accessibility within the City of Bend.
I can interrupt for just a second.
Sure.
I would recommend, so the group certainly reached consensus around the first priority area, area of focus. The second two areas of focus, thank you to everybody who submitted their feedback to Lisa and I. We were able to reduce that each of those kind of option lists in half. My recommendation, Nick, and I think I mentioned this in the email I sent earlier, but apologies if I did not, would be that you start by either operationalizing just that first bucket work where we've got just one activity, or you could guide the groups through a discussion and ultimate decision about the subsequent two areas of focus and selecting one activity under each of those, rather than trying to tackle two under each of those. Hopefully that helps clarify procedurally what might be meaningful for the group.
Okay, excellent. I guess with that, then we'll, I'll, we'll start by tackling the first or the last two items on that list and seeing which one we want to move forward with that, since we do have a consensus on that first one. And then we can then move on to that item and discuss ways we can accomplish that item. So does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have the two items, which was creating an accessibility, an accessible community or and or improving transportation and infrastructure. And so just kind of go around the room with that. You know, for creating an accessible community or improving transportation infrastructure, what is, what is everyone's thoughts on which one they feel is a higher priority?
To clarify, I think we're trying to pick one of the two items for each of those categories, right?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Um, I suppose I will get involved in this. This is Corey. So under each of these, I tried to think about what strategically might have the most impact or what feels the most tangible for creating an accessible community. The creating the partnership with the chamber feels more or less ambiguous than the, than the second one. So it might have be more of a, have more smart goal possibilities. And and it would kind of have a potentially a direct effect on people using businesses. And then for improving transportation and infrastructure, I think that partnering with the Bend MPO to provide feedback also has better strategic possibilities than worked, than working to incentivize local transportation providers first, primarily because I don't know what kind of, you know, incentivizing tool we could use. And so being directly in contact with kind of decision makers or would, I think, would be more valuable use of our time. So personally, I would prefer the first option under each of those.
I would agree. This is Ashley.
This is Carl. On the first one, I agree. I think in some ways, I find myself wishing that I could directly talk with businesses that are that seem to be out of compliance with accessibility laws. But I recognize that that's not exactly within the role of this committee. So I like this idea of being able to do some education about accessibility and maybe create a partnership that would allow us to, I don't know, provide resources or support people who want to make changes to become more accessible. That makes sense to me. On the second, or the, I guess, the third category, improving transportation and infrastructure. I was wondering if anybody could provide more detail about that first option. These are actually acronyms that I'm not very familiar with. And I think I'm missing a little bit of context on that one. Apologies if we've gone over this in past meetings, but I feel a little in the dark on that one.
So the Bend Metropolitan Planning Organization is a and you can help me with this, is a, is a sort of a transportation funding mechanism within the city to help any of the improvements to the public right of way essentially. And then, and then that's also the, there's that American Rescue Plan that has certain funds available for that, that is also filtered through the Bend MPO.
Okay, so when we, when you say public right of ways, are we talking about roads, sidewalks, bike paths?
All of that.
All of that.
Yeah. Yeah, anything that's with, not on private property, you know, for a street, you'd have your public sidewalk, you'd have maybe a landscape strip parking, maybe there's a dedicated bike lanes, and then your actual roadway for vehicles.
And does that include anything about public transit or no?
Um, but I will go ahead. So I'm Chair of the MPO. MPO actually stands for Metropolitan Planning Organization, and not very many people understand it very well at all. It's actually a federally required committee that is the city and the county and ODAS. And normally, these organizations are to plan between two cities that have sprawled into each other. But in Oregon, we don't allow sprawl. So Bend is a really unusual situation. We're one of the only single city MPOs in the state, certainly, maybe in the entire country. And so, so our MPO got American Rescue Plan money, a million and a half dollars. And that funding is quite flexible. It can be, it must be transportation, but that's really all that it is. Our MPO does, I will also say, it also includes Tumalo and Deschutes River Woods. So we thought that we might be able to use, we were hoping to use the money to leverage, to move something that just was not going to get off ground unless it had additional funding, something like that. And the first thing we looked into was either over or underpass for the North Corridor project. And did some work looking into that and discovered that any kind of crossing up there is more like in the 10 to 20 million dollar price tag. And our million and a half was not going to, you know, be able to get that off the ground, which then led us to, if we're going to have a crossing over the Parkway, is that even where we would say is the most important spot in the whole city? Would we really choose up there by the North Corridor? Or maybe we would choose Hawthorne, you know? So we then decided, well, how about leveraging housing? We have such a housing crisis, specifically affordable housing and our affordable housing projects. One of the most, the biggest, the hardest things to fund are off-site improvements that are required. And so any building project, if you are right along a street that hasn't been approved, if there's no sidewalk, you might be required to infill that. And the cost of that can honestly stop some affordable housing projects from getting off the ground. So at that point, we thought, well, there's a nexus there. What if we tried to use this funding on an affordable, for affordable housing projects that otherwise just would not be able to make it? And then, and then we thought, of course, of accessibility. And that's where we get to this committee of the other priority, in addition to helping with housing, are connected networks. Ashley, you've been with us for, I've been working on this committee. Thank you so much for quite a while, and so have you, Corey. And you know that, you know, sidewalks to nowhere, curb ramps that don't link up to anything have been a frustration and, you know, a real problem trying to fund. And so we thought, well, there's another way we might be able to use this money is to actually connect a corridor that would not otherwise be complete for accessibility. So we thought, we already have these two excellent advisory committees, this one here, which advises us on accessibility, and we have our affordable housing. And so the MPO was hoping that we could ask you all to help us in deciding what should we do with this million and a half dollars? Thank you.
Carl, thank you so much, Barb. That helps a lot, provides a lot of context. I agree that those are worthwhile goals. And I wonder if, I wonder whether the second item in this heading, which I proposed about making on-demand transportation in the city more accessible, might possibly be something that could be addressed under the umbrella of these ARBA funds.
Yes.
So I, I guess I'm proposing that we might be able to combine these two items in a way. Because this second item about making on-demand transportation accessible in Bend would require some funding to, or at least I think that's how the incentivizing would work best, is if we could offer local transportation providers funds to purchase accessible vehicles for their taxi fleets or their Uber fleets or so on. So thoughts about the idea of maybe making that part of our approach to advising the MPO on using those funds to improve access?
Comes up here.
Yeah. I mean, it all, it all depends on bandwidth for people that are on the committee. I feel like a lot of the stuff on the different lists could definitely be combined. Some of these things we could bang out in, you know, an hour, but some of these things like, like partnering with the MPO would, you know, you would definitely want to base on both of these things. So I think combining them makes total sense. Yeah, I, I, from my own experience, I walk around downtown a lot, and I run into issues like just yesterday, I was taking pictures of two different businesses that had totally blocked the sidewalk with tables. And I understand, like, I guess I just, with this, creating, creating a partnership with the chamber and, you know, talking with businesses. I really want it to be like a carrot and a stick type and thing where it's like, I would love to go into one of the restaurants that keeps doing it and, and tell them like, hey, like, here's a little PDF, like here, or here's a printout about like what you can do as a business and to make sure that you have, you know, 36 inches between your tables and the chairs and everything out there on the sidewalk. But also, I also want us to be a resource for people in the community that need answers. So what happens when someone's blocking the sidewalk with their car? You know, what do you, who do you call? Like, is there actually someone for us to call to get that car moved? Or what kind of enforcement is there for businesses other than just talking to them? And I guess I, I mean, I know we're an advisory council, but it would be nice to figure out, like, if someone parks in a spot they're not supposed to be in, like, who do people call? Like, what reason, like?
It's usually the volunteer police department.
Yeah.
You know, I would suggest maybe, you know, talk with them and, you know.
Yeah. No, and it, it comes down to like, I think someone was on the Ben subreddit a couple of days ago, and they're like, someone keeps blocking the sidewalk, who do I call? And nobody really had a straight answer. You know, wasn't it an obstruction? Was it a police thing? Was it a, you know? Yeah. So it's, it's like, I just, I want, I want, when someone comes up to me and says like, hey, like, I have a hard time getting around this. Yeah, so it's, it's like, I just, I want, I want when someone comes up to me and says like, hey, like, I have a hard time getting around this town. Who do I call? And to be like, you should call this person to help fix the sidewalk or because your neighbor's sidewalk is so pushed up, they need to fix it. Who do they call for that? And I just, I would like to, as part of the resource for creating a partnership with the chamber is to have a list of all the different resources available to people for when they have issues. So, and maybe we could have it on the website too.
This is Carl. That seems like a very concrete step we could take to compile a list of the types of issues relating to accessibility that citizens commonly encounter. And then a list of possible remedies or at least starting points for each of those areas. I like it.
Yeah, I mean, and like, sorry, this is John. That's something that, you know, we could probably hammer out over a couple hours. And if we don't have answers to certain questions, then that will require more time for us to be like, okay, does the city need to have a relationship with a towing company so that we can get people out of the, you know, spots they're not supposed to be in? And so hopefully we'll, in the process of coming up with this document, figure out what answers or what questions don't have answers and how do we facilitate that?
Aaron, is that a question? This is kind of me backing up a little bit, but I had a couple of questions for Barb about the MPO funds.
Sure.
So you said it's a total of 1.5 million. I just was wondering if there's a deadline they have to be spent by?
The deadline's not till 2024. So we do still have, I think, a full year, really.
And you kind of ticked off like affordable housing, connecting infrastructure. It's a couple of diverse things. Does there seem like a clear fork in the road at this point from that committee of like, which way they're going or kind of how far along have they progressed on, you know, that subject? Are they, have they crossed that fork yet or?
No, as I said, in my mind, we have, you know, maybe crossed off the idea of a crossing over the parkway. But then just yesterday, a member of the MPO said, maybe we should be contributing to the Hawthorne crossings. Or we just had a new member of the MPO join us. So no, really, at this point, I, I kind of feel like all ideas are on the table.
Is there anybody in that organization who's, or that committee who's like cross-checking for like matching funds or anything that like these projects could be eligible for this 1.5 million plus, this grant from whatever government entity? Or is that easily accomplished or difficult to do in practice?
Um, it's, I imagine that it is difficult to do in practice, but we have amazing staff. They seem to always be ahead of, you know, on top of grant opportunities and matching opportunities. And Aaron, that's exactly the kind of, you know, idea we were hoping to find is some place where we might be able to use this million and a half dollars in order to get more dollars, you know, from the state or federal government, maybe, or, you know, even local, other local agencies. So yes, Aaron, if we could, you know, that's absolutely what I think we're trying to do with the money. On the other hand is, yeah, we really could just give it out $100,000 at a time or something to projects that apply. You know, we really are at this stage, you know, we're kind of right at the exact time to be talking about both of these questions. Because this is exactly what our MPO meeting was the day before yesterday, was trying to, you know, figure out the process. And how are we going to let people know these funds are available? And what kinds do we want to ask for proposals? That's exactly what we're trying to get at right now, Aaron. And then I will just, while I'm on the microphone, say that the city is at this moment redesigning our website. So John, you were talking about, you know, just ideas for linking to our website and to our accessibility page. A lot of times, you know, just having the, the resource, how to get to the resource at the right place, you know, can really make the difference for people. So absolutely, a single page with what do you do if there's somebody blocking a sidewalk? You know, resources like that. And I, I hope we'll have a chance for input on that new website design. Did that help, Aaron?
Yeah, it did. I guess my last question or comment was that it's, it sounds like it's not all or nothing, like you don't necessarily would spend all of it on one good idea. You might split it up between a couple ideas.
Right now, I think we're actually leaning more toward a couple of good ideas.
Okay.
We really have, it's been a while. We've been discussing this since the beginning of the year. And, you know, we just really haven't found that thing that needs a million and a half dollars in order for it to happen. And so right now I think it's more that second idea of, you know, at least a couple or a few projects that we might be able to help.
Would it be like useful for this committee to say, like, or even have a goal saying like, well, here's, here's an idea, it costs this much, we're going to submit this idea to the, the MPO committee?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, cool. Thank you for the background information. I guess I wasn't caught up, but I just wanted to stop you while you seemed like you knew what was going on. So thank you.
You do not entirely caught up. Like I said, Eric, very few people know the MPO even exists. Much less, you know, who was there and what do we do? And the fact that, yeah, we have funding.
I'd love to know more. Oh, this is John. I'd love to know more about the scope of the MPO because like, I mean, people joke about it, but it's like, imagine if giving every resident in Bend an electric bike or something, or what if we could subsidize sidewalk repairs for homeowners with that money? So I guess I would love to know what those funds could be used for and what kind of scope they are.
Um, it really, from what I've heard, these are extremely flexible funds, which is unusual in government. Usually, government money comes with all kinds of strings attached. And the one thing I am not sure about, and I'm sorry, is whether or not the money has to be spent on capital improvement. Capital usually means 20 years. I've learned that it really is kind of attached to a time. How long will something last? If it is something that's going to last for more than 20 years, it's considered to be a capital improvement. So a lot of our funds, we have supported, we in fact funded the Blue Bikes. The MPO did. The MPO has funded transit in the past. We, if I say so myself, there are about three buses that are the low floor kind that you don't have, that you can just roll right on, that are there because of the Bend MPO. And so absolutely, transit has very much been part of our focus. But we have found that in a lot of cases, we can't use the money for a bus, but we could use the money for a bus station or a bus stop. That could be the case with this money. And I'm sorry, I'm just not positive about that right now. But otherwise, I really think that as long as it's transportation, sidewalks, bike lanes, streets, any of those kinds of things I think are eligible.
Barb, is that something, sorry, Carl, is that something you could find out about and get back to us on?
Absolutely, yes.
Restricted to capital improvements or not?
Sure, yeah, yeah. I, I do, Carl, I will say, I love that idea. Our, having worked so hard on the low-floor buses, now the system is kind of varying toward exactly what you're saying, smaller vehicles, smaller vehicles, door-to-door service. And yes, you know, finding the money to actually purchase the vehicles. I find that ironic. We can find money to build stuff all day long. But to try and find money for maintenance and to try and find money for staff to actually do things is really problematic, just as a general comment about funding for government.
I have a question on, you know, wondering if that could provide money to give training to the, the local transit, you know, Uber and all of that thing. I think a lot of the barrier oftentimes is that people don't have training on how to handle someone who has a wheelchair per se when they come to them. And so it's, it's not really something that is offered as well in their app or something because they don't, you know, they just simply don't know how to do it. And so I wonder if, if training would be part of that. Because even if we do provide fleets for them, they need to know how to actually deal with people. They need to know language. They need to know all the things. So.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just on my phone because I'm writing an email this very moment in order to try and find the answer to these questions. Yes, I will get back to you. You bet I can find out.
Um, this is Corey. I wanted to make a comment about, again, the partnership with the chamber. I think that they have quite a lot of resources and quite a lot of reach in the community. And I think something like a collection of, you know, resources, what that was mentioned, like what do you do if something's blocking a sidewalk, whatever? I think that that might be something that we could pull off with the, within the context of a relationship with the chamber, for sure. So just another idea about just combining these two things under each of these guys.
I feel like, Ashley, I feel like we could even combine the little cards with the chamber stuff.
Absolutely.
Sure, the chamber loves little cards.
Just using a smaller phone.
Yeah, I had, because I used, I spent many years as a waitress. And, you know, the problem is, these are their customers and their customers tip. And servers live on tips. And so whenever you have a situation where you're trying to ask the server to say to their customers, you can't be there, you've got to move, you can't, and, and what I see downtown is when their friends come, you know, maybe the first four people were not in the right of way. Well, now someone else has pulled up a chair. You know, that happens in all restaurants, whether they're indoors or outdoors. And then you've got aisles blocked. So the idea I had was City of Bend tape measures. I know this sounds silly, but actually logo that says City of Bend on it. And, you know, I'm imagining myself as a waitress 20 years ago. And I would be able to pull this thing out and say, City of Bend, ah, boy. They just are on top of us all the time and I've got to make you move. I'm so sorry. It's not, but do you see what I mean? And, and go ahead and take that onus off of that tipped employee and give them a way, you know, this tangible way of saying, I have to make you move. And this is why it is the City of Bend. It's AA. You know what I mean? But, and that to me just ties exactly into what you're saying, which is training. And, you know, Ashley, try and get some training to those folks who are dealing with this every single day as part of their job, whether it's indoors or outdoors. You know, like I said, people do this all the time inside restaurants. They pull their chair out, they pull chairs, sorry, I'm done.
Your yardstick idea is much better than mine, which was to get a street sweeper and put a bulldozer front and just.
Just move them, just, you know, go through. Yeah, John, there's, there's another idea.
Barb, this is Corey. I have another MPO question relating to Ashley's question about, you know, like Uber and Lyft are problematic in that they're just people who do that job. So it's not really under like public purview, but does the, you know, does any aspect of the government, including MPO, have any kind of recourse there to like, do anything about that?
I'm, I'm really, I'm using my memory to try and answer your question, Corey. Because all of this came up when the city permitted, you know, change the code in order to allow Uber and Lyft to operate in our city. And the requirements are, you know, what is required does not actually produce a vehicle on the streets that can have a wheelchair, you know, frankly. And they are, you know, those, that style of company, I'll tell you, I just, I think they're getting around a whole lot of regulations about how do you treat employees? For example, you know, they found this kind of sneaky way to not have any employees. They're all subcontractors. And that is how they managed to like straddle this line between, sure, we provide transportation for everyone without actually having to do anything to make that true. Does that make sense? That's another one I can look into and see if there's, this, this is one we've been working on. I, I think, you know, what is it? It's dial 24-hour dialer, right? You know, I feel like we're just going to need, you know, one transit funded, you know, that's actually part of the public transit system vehicle that could pick a person up door-to-door at any hour of the day or night. Yes.
Carl, yeah, I, I looked into this a bit. It's not my career or anything, but Uber and Lyft both have wheelchair-accessible vehicle programs in certain cities where they offer specially-adapted vehicles that can carry a power chair or a scooter. One role for the city of Bend, it seems to me, could be if we wanted to be one of those cities, we could perhaps put pressure on them to say, like, look, if you want to continue to operate in Bend, we require that you, that you offer the service that you offer in Portland and Seattle, where you offer wheelchair-accessible vehicles. So that's one place where I would see our role possibly. And if we can offer funding to help local drivers purchase vehicles to be able to be part of that wheelchair-accessible vehicle fleet, so much the better, right? That I feel like that would only increase our chances of being able to make that case.
Thank you, Carl. That is new information to me and, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, thanks again for sharing that. I didn't know they had that program and I have all kinds of ideas for that.
So we've got, that, that was a lot of great stuff. And I think we can combine quite a bit with those. Just thinking out loud with the MPO and partnering with, with that board. I, I do think we can have them come to our monthly meetings to, to present and to, and, and that's a pretty concrete way for us to provide feedback during, during that time for them to present what's going on, whether their thoughts and then to solicit our ideas and thoughts as well. So I think that's, that could be in not a quick way, but a, a concrete way to be able to make that move forward.
I see Aaron hands his hand up again.
Aaron? Oh, I think it's just the cursor.
There you go, I couldn't tell.
And so I think, I think we can, that, that's something that's easily done. We can add that to our agenda going forward. And I don't know the frequency of those types of meetings, whether, whether it's a monthly or every other month. I think that would be something worth, worth having at this point, especially if that's one of our strategic priorities.
I could invite MPO staff to come to this meeting if you'd like. And we could ask them directly, you know, any questions you have. And if you'd like me to do that, I'd be happy to.
Okay, I think so, yeah.
Good.
Okay, and then in terms of, and I do think that kind of combines with the local transportation providers. I think we can add that into that kind of stuff as well.
Great.
So I think we, I can synthesize this for you. Sharisa and Lisa, if you guys want, kind of what we're talking about here or just let me know. I've been taking some notes here. And then in terms of creating the accessible community, obviously, I think working with chambers is a great idea. I, I think we can even engage other community members with that. And so we can kind of bring that, those two items together as well. And it's really create a partnership with the chamber and other community members to, to talk about that. And I think it would be great to have, just like the MPO would come to our meeting, also to have the volunteer police department come to our meeting and, and figure out what do they need or what do they, what's, you know, what, what is required of them? Yeah, and I think having them at one of our meetings, I think would also then go to that first idea. Yeah. And I think having them at one of our meetings, I think would also then go to that first item, which is creating a culture of accessibility within the city. And so having those two items connected, I think makes a great deal of sense. Cool.
Something just said that the connection is unstable, so. It's up.
Okay.
And broadband.
Yeah.
How's our time on this agenda item? How much time do we have left?
So we have uh we have 30 minutes remaining um or 20, we'll say with the other items, we have about 20 minutes remaining.
Um, I just wanted to uh comment that having heard more about uh the MPO and and these funds that they have to spend, this seems like potentially one of the most impactful things that we could do as a committee is to make these recommendations about um how they could be spent on ways that would benefit accessibility in the city. Sounds really exciting to me.
Cool.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If I made cards, could I bring them in here and people just be like, yeah, I like it. Let's do it. We can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking of just whipping something together myself and buying it on Costco photo or whatever, like just printing out.
Sure, sorry. This is Ashley. Yeah, I was wondering if it was possible for for myself as one of the the members to just make the cards myself. It would be a very simple thing and bring it in here. And then I don't know if COBAC would want to like, you know, say that they agree with it or or just disperse between us and.
Can I work on that with you? Would that be cool?
Sure, if that's allowed.
What cards are these?
So.
Yeah, the ones for on cards. Okay.
You guys might wanna.
Can come up with a draft.
Yeah.
Are we allowed to do that since it's the two of us work on it?
Yeah.
Um, so I think certainly as individual citizens, the city cannot dictate exactly what you're going to do. But if you would like it to be something supported by COBAC, um, I think the idea of running it by Eric is a great one. He will be at the October meeting. Um, and so that might be a good opportunity to see if there is an opportunity to kind of get that the COBAC City of Bend and stamp of approval. But actually, to your question, as individual citizens, can you and John get together and make these cards and hand them out? Absolutely. It just gets a little bit, uh, we need to be a bit more methodical if it's going to be a City of Bend COBAC um resource.
So what I would do is from like a procedural standpoint, I would say someone to make a motion for that. And then we can second and vote. And then that way we've got that kind of clear, you know, just Robert Rose Porter type of thing. So would anyone like to make a motion for 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 Ashley to start um uh creating cards?
Yeah, make a motion to generate a rough draft of a card to be potentially approved and or disapproved in the future.
This is Corey. I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? Perfect. All right. That's a one concrete step.
Hey.
Yeah. Sorry, I have to be the uh the the rule follower here for at least one more month. Okay. And so the uh the last item here is the creating a culture of accessibility within the City of Bend organization. And so that's asking the city to provide training to engineers, planners, inspectors, developers about disability equity ADA and making things accessible. You know, obviously, as a group, we thought this was a great item to do. And I think um, you know, one of the items we mentioned was uh uh talking with the volunteer police department. I think that that would be a a great first step. Uh, does anyone have any other thoughts on, you know, how we go about asking the city to provide training?
Strongly worded leather letter.
Are we trying to figure that out now or just like agree that we're gonna focus on this at some point?
I think we're trying to come up with a couple ways we can do it. Not necessarily like, let's do it now type of, but just like, oh, you know, we would send a letter uh about this about the volunteer police department, have them come to a meeting, just kind of those types of uh overarching things.
Um, oh, did you have something, Ashley?
Go ahead.
Okay. This is Corey. Um, I mean, can we just have the city require it? Like some type of training and not necessarily like um, you know, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know how city trainings really go.
Do they? Do they already do it? Like?
I would think they don't.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I would think that they're, you know, if they're licensed, then they potentially would have training of some kind or like understand ADA requirements.
Right.
But um, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know if there would be, like, what kind of resources it would take for the city to provide some kind of basic training. I mean, that might include coming here a couple times or something like that. It feels like that that is something that we would need to talk to the city about. Um.
Well, maybe we could start it by, this is John, uh, maybe we could start it by asking uh the city manager um what currently is in place and what potentially we could do to get the word out to the different departments.
Working with the Equity Committee would also be really important, sure.
And Sharisa, hand us up.
You, I was going to suggest um another thing to consider might be asking folks um from the building department and from the engineering department to come and share information about what is included in their training already. Um, for example, building code does include some requirements to meet the ADA minimums. Um, there might be some answers that um professionally and and, you know, to answer some of those questions and then build from there. Um, but just an idea uh for this committee to consider.
Cause I I have seen, this is Nick, um, I've seen the uh actually the building inspectors and plan checkers in an accessibility class that I had with them. Cause as an architect, I have to have so so much accessibility training as well. And so I've seen them as part of those uh things. But we also do have a new portion of the ICC A117.1 2017 is coming out uh January 1st with with more uh restrictive ADA requirements.
Interesting.
So I think it as as part of that, it would be good to kind of learn a little bit more of, you know, wheelchair clearances are now 67 inches instead of 60 inches. So things like that, I think we could, we could kind of, I know the city's gonna be getting that sort of training, but.
So it sounds like we just need to figure out what's in place currently.
Yeah.
And then we can come up with something. So that way we're not reinventing the wheel.
Yeah.
Uh, this is Aaron. I had a kind of question related to that. Does anybody have any easy references for the ADA? I imagine it's like a thick document, but is there like a sidewalk or a simplified version work off of or go off of, or is it extremely complicated? That's kind of a general question.
It's the ADAG, the ADA Accessibility Guidelines. Is that right, Nick? That's what you'd look at?
Uh, there's that one. There's PROWAG, um, which is the Public Right of Way Access. Um, and then there's also the ICC A117.1. That's a a separate one. They they sometimes call that AMC.
You said this is called Proleg?
PROWAG.
PROWAG, okay.
Yeah. And I can send all these um uh items out to the group too. Um, in an email. There's some online references for these two uh as they come out. Currently, the ICC one is under the 2009 version, but it's being upgraded to the 2017 version effective January 1st. It's actually optional for new buildings if they want to, starting, I think, October 1st, so.
Okay, thank you.
Carl, um, something Sharisa said, uh, think about the police department as well, since we were just talking about them. It would be nice to know what their current training around disability is. Um, I'd love to, I'd love for the this committee to be able to hear about that so that we might be able to see whether we want to make any sorts of recommendations to them in the future.
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that's a fantastic idea. This is Corey. Um, because so many people who are arrested and incarcerated are disabled. It's almost half.
Wow, really? And this is Ashley. I I would like to just make sure that we're focusing not just on ADA when we're doing these trainings, but really from an equitable approach and just human centered, not a checkbox. Um, and really, you know, cause I think even with the engineers, if if they know what the code is for a crosswalk, you know, there's still so many that it's like, what were they thinking? You know, it's like, I'm practically in traffic. And, you know, even if they're following it, I don't think they understand what it means to physically be in that space. And so some sort of training around that, I think would be really good.
I was just thinking we could rent some chairs and have them try to get around town for a day or something.
Um, the uh disability for a day was an activity. I can't even remember who it was.
Whitney.
Thank you. Right? Was it Coca that arranged?
Yeah.
I think so. And it was exactly that kind of idea, John. I participated. And it wasn't an entire day. It was a few hours.
Yeah.
You know, actually trying to turn a wheelchair around in a box that is this big and getting onto and off buses. Um, one thing I did was go across the intersection of Greenwood at Third Street wearing a blindfold. Not by myself, no. But, you know, just the terror of that being in that space and not enough time to get across.
I, okay, so I have a very different opinion on these disability for a day. I think they can be pretty problematic when you put someone who has no experience in our life. Um, you know, it takes years for us to get used to this and, you know, it's not scary every day. I think it kind of elicits pity and a fear of disability. And that's something that I very much work against is is keeping people away from viewing disability as this scary, terrifying thing that they want nothing to do with. Because I think that that perpetuates the stereotypes of disability and kind of rolls into the reason why, you know, we only rely on ADA or, you know, just people don't connect with people with disabilities that that we are, you know, this marginalized community and discriminated against in a lot of ways because people really don't understand it. And so I I struggle with that because, you know, even in my thesis, I had a component of that. And then it, you know, after learning about it and thinking about it a lot more, realized that like, I don't know if that's giving the right message or the message that I want. And I think we can use it as a tool, certainly. Um, but I I really want to be cautious about doing those things that aren't thought out super clearly. And then people are just kind of haphazardly jumping into it um and making sure that it has a very specific uh lesson that comes with it. So that's just my.
That's great.
I'm sorry. I I don't. The language about, you know, it was terrifying. The other is, I can't imagine how you do it. You're so much braver and stronger than I am, you know, of what is.
A great example of, you know, what that kind of disability for a day gave you, what the experience for you it was. And that that's more validating on my point is, you know, and so I appreciate that that you had that experience and we can talk about it. And and none of us know until we know, until we try it, you know. And when I was in grad school, I thought it was a great idea. And I got all of my professors and my critiquers in in chairs and everything. And it was just kind of like, oh my God, like watching them go through it was just like, oh, they're getting the wrong idea, you know? Um, and so we just don't know. Oops, sorry. We don't know until we try it. So, yeah, no.
That's where I have Sharisa's voice in my head. Nothing about us without us, right? I just, you know, yeah, thank you, Ashley. Thanks.
And to add to Ashley's uh point, this is Corey. Um, it also doesn't, it's not super expansive with the range of disabled experiences. Like, I'm disabled, but I don't, like, I have different, you know, challenge, like, you know, different challenges. Um, and I mean, if you want to do epilepsy for a day.
I'll just walk around and hit you over the head with a baseball bat once, when you're not expecting it. But um, yeah, so, but yeah, good combo.
You're exactly right. How else are you gonna do epilepsy for a day?
Yeah, I I just, I really appreciate you guys speaking up because like I looked at it as like when they put on like the drunk glasses and they like have you ride a bike, like, oh, this is how it is, you know, it's like, yeah, I, yeah, thank you for speaking up.
All right. So I think.
Get us back on track.
Yeah, exactly. We'll try. Um, so uh we've got a a few minutes here just to recap what we've talked about. Um, and then uh I'll kind of summarize this uh uh from my notes I've been taking here as well and to kind of supplement what we've talked about. But as a recap, uh, we talked about the creating a culture of accessibility within the City of Bend organization. Uh, you know, that's not only letters from COBAC to the city, but ask, but bringing um Eric King and inquiring from him what's already in place and then working with the Human Rights and Equity Committee. Um, and then also who gets that type of training within the within the city uh for um all these items? So is it police, sheriff, fire, emergency responders? Who's who's getting all this type of training uh in addition to the regular staff that engineers, planners, inspectors, et cetera? Um, and then we did talk about um uh not just about the ADA, but also about the experiences and equity with all that. So that's kind of where that Human Rights and Equity Committee comes into play. And so that's kind of the recap of item number one. Any questions on that? Okay. All right. So then for creating an accessible, an accessible community, um, obviously, the first item where we partner with the Chamber, I think that that that's a a pretty concrete step. Uh, you know, we want to be able to support businesses who want to make those changes. And then also providing a collection of resources to the Chamber as well as uh cards uh for the city and even Ben City of Bend tape measures.
Thank you. It's in writing now.
And then um, and then that also will will play into that second item, which is the General Educational Informative Goal, uh, which, uh, you know, investing in time communication for the community. But that's also like, who do people call? That's that resource with the, as as we redesign the city's website. Uh, what resources do we put on there, you know, and that's also going back to that, our first strategic plan priority, which is the volunteer police department and asking them about if if that's who's being called. Are they properly trained uh to answer those calls? Okay, uh, that's item number two. Any questions for creating an accessible community?
Will somebody uh take on the task of rewriting those two into one? Is that the approach that we want to take?
I'll I'll handle that. Yeah, as I as I kind of combine these notes and formalize them a little bit better. And I'll send it out to the group. Um, and then we can, you you can review that prior to our next October meeting. And then we can uh vote on that and have our strategic plan done for Sharisa by uh October 27th. All right. So the last item was improving transportation and infrastructure partnering with Bend MPO um for the ARPA funds. Uh, we talked about um uh basically uh having MPO uh attend uh some of our COBAC meetings and present. And then also uh to uh for COBAC to offer feedback and ideas that we have in regards to making the community more accessible through that vehicle. And then also, uh, you know, part of those items would be, you know, for the capital improvements, you know, are we focusing on smaller chunks of good, of a couple of good ideas or one larger idea? And then i- is it training for transit? Is it that, uh, you know, putting pressure on uplift and funding for drivers? And so that will then, the work to incentivize local transportation providers will then be rolled up into that other item uh uh for the use of ARPA funds for accessible vehicle feet and those items.
Yeah, I'm I'm okay with not having the local transportation thing explicitly mentioned as part of our overall transportation and infrastructure goal. As long as we maybe come together and either in person or virtually or however that's going to work, start making a list of what we think our priorities as a committee are for recommendations about using those ARPA funds. Does that sound like something we agree on?
We keep this um strategic plan and we still have those items on there and just.
And just revisit soon, as soon as the other ones are taken care of or add to it, you know, um, so it's an ongoing list.
I do wonder, do we want to have some sort of list like that put together before we have the Bend MPO in here, um, talking with us so that we can say, these are our recommendations? Or would we want to consider that more as a follow-up for a, a subsequent meeting with them?
Um, this is Cory. I think it would be useful just to keep things in our mind as potential options for the funding. Because obviously there will be certain things where the funding can make a, a greater impact or, you know, we can, you know, just look at what's actually possible. Because obviously we are not experts in how much things cost or whether they're super doable or their timeline, et cetera. So, um, I think it's good to have that and other ideas like, you know, as list, like part of a list for consideration. And then we can just investigate those in the future, once we develop that partnership.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, with the MPO. How, that first one is more of a information for us to gather. And then they would come back after we then formulate some of our, the ideas and thoughts that we have in that list of, of items. I think that would be good because it would be important for us to know sort of the rules and the groundwork that's required, um, for those items.
That makes sense to me. Barb is the, um, you said Chair of the Bend MBO, right? Uh, does that seem like the right approach to you?
I think so. Yeah, I think so. I think it would be great to, you know, actually be able to a- ask your questions and, you know, flesh out ideas a little bit before making recommendations.
Sure, but we would, um, it would, it would be helpful for us to at least have some of those ideas to throw at the wall first.
Right, exactly. The other option is I can find out in email. That, you know, does the money have to be on twenty year capital improvement programs? Could we use it for something like a bus? Could we use it for training? Those are very specific questions that I could get an answer back almost immediately. I could then send you those answers by email, which might set you up to discussing ideas at the next meeting. And then the meeting after that might be when MPO staff comes and you could discuss specific ideas. Does that sound like a pathway?
Yeah.
Um, and for what it's worth, I think that the, um, idea of like just exploring the city, um, putting pressure on Uber and Lyft for these things, for that, or for establishing, um, uh, accessible vehicle program. I think we can see where that comes up elsewhere and try and do it anyway when it comes around. Cause, um, I think, I mean, at least with the council we have now, I think there would be pretty good appetite for that. If there's, you know, any kind of contract renewal or anything like that. So, um, yeah. Cause I, I want to do that regardless, because that sounds pretty sweet.
So I think we've got, uh, we covered all that. I know we're running out of time here. Um, so, uh, I'll follow up with, with my notes, kind of summarizing what we talked about, and then I'll send that out to the group. Um, and then obviously that will have some public meeting law things, but I'm not sure how, how to handle. Maybe I'll send it to you, Sharisa, and then you can send it from there. Uh, and then, uh, so we've covered the strategic plan. That was a great discussion, everyone. Thank you for that. We went way past our thirty minutes on it, which is great. But we also had a couple of things drop off today that allowed us to do that. So real quick here, we'll go to item number eight, which is, uh, Sharisa's opportunity to provide an update on accessibility and equity.
Hello, folks. Um, so I'll be fairly quick. Um, this will probably be the last time I provide an update because we're pivoting, um, to Lisa. So to, today my update is really going to focus on, um, two things. One, um, thank you to those of you who participated in Welcoming Week. That was one of the things getting on the community that this commu- that this committee wanted to do. There will be another opportunity to get out in the community with City Quest. Um, I followed up with Cheryl Howard, one of our colleagues at the city, who is overseeing that program because this is going to be the first year kind of post-ish COVID. Uh, the event is not going to be as large as it, as it has been in the past. So there's not necessarily an opportunity for COBAC to have a standalone table and tent. That said, um, there may be an opportunity or, or is a similar opportunity really to what John experienced and Barb experienced with Welcoming Week, where you could go out as a member of COBAC uh, and participate in those events and come back and report. So I think that's the first thing, um, that I'd want to share. And then the other thing, I do want to give this group an update, um, on the efforts to recruit for my replacement. That posting will be coming out later this week or early next week. As soon as I've got that information in hand, I will be sending it to this group. Um, and I will be forwarding it to Coca as well. That is something that I mentioned when I attended the Coca meeting last week. And so in terms of timeline, the, the posting is going to be open for a minimum of three weeks. The first round of reviews of applications will start around the tenth of October. Um, I will be involved in those reviews, so there's time for me to give feedback before my departure um, from the city at the end of, uh, October. And we do want to have a COBAC representative participate in the interview process. Nick was, uh, involved in my interviews and we would like to continue that. So we will be reaching out once we start to finalize those interview plans, uh, to find a member of COBAC, um, to participate. So those are the updates that I have. I will pause for just a moment and see if anybody has questions about either of those things.
Sharisa, when is your last day, um, on, on the job?
Uh, so my last day is, I have, my contract goes through the end of October. So practically, and I anticipate that the, the next COBAC meeting will be my last kind of full day, um, with the city. Any other questions for me? All right, Nick. I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next item is just a quick round table of items that, if we have five minutes for this, just about any certain items that we want to advocate for. Now, we had a lot of this great discussion with our strategic plan, but if there's anything in this section that you guys have, you know, um, go ahead and, uh, mention it.
Can I add a little context, Nick?
Yeah.
Great. This is a new item, um, on the agenda. So, so the idea here, and this is thanks to Barb. Barb recommended it. That we have time for folks on COBAC to bring up information that isn't necessarily directly related to the City of Bend. Specifically the city organization, but things that you think COBAC members might be interested in knowing about your work or events that are going on. Um, so this is intended to be more free form and open than, you know, certainly the business section of this meeting might be. So with that, I will be quiet and turn it over to the committee.
Cool. I had, uh, someone come into my bar a couple of days ago. Um, she works in Eugene for New Motion, which makes motorized wheelchairs. And I told her about COBAC and told, gave her my card and told her to reach out because she's interested in figuring out what we're about. And I, I guess they have a repair division here in Bend, and so they're recruiting robotics people and stuff for, for fixing chairs. So that was an interesting contact I made.
Yeah, um, they, New Motion doesn't, uh, make chairs, but they do sell both power and manual wheelchairs and other mobility equipment. And, um, several of us in, uh, Bend kind of, um, adaptive sports community work with them on our wheelchair needs. They're, they're a good, good, uh, partner.
Yeah.
They do, yeah, they do.
Write in and say, hey, where can I get this fixed? We, we do hand out information from.
Right. Yeah. I mean, they're, I think they're down a person, suppose they're out here training new, uh, repair technicians, but yeah. Let's get their info up on the website.
David Taylor is the person that I work with. I think you do too, right?
Yeah, he's the best.
He's the best around on that stuff. Um, and he's the one who I think is trying to hire someone, someone new technician, mobiley.
Right on.
I have one item just i- in this round table. Uh, we, um, on, I think it's next Tuesday, there is a camping code roundtable. Um, and so I, I'm planning to attend on COBAC's behalf. If there's any thoughts or questions or concerns you want to relay, uh, for that roundtable discussion on Tuesday.
Oh, that's an interesting one. I know that, um, this has come up recently in Portland and other cities where, um, code that allows tent, tents on sidewalks has been challenged by disability rights groups, right? Does anyone know about that story? I'd want to advocate for making sure that we have, um, rules and enforcement in Bend that avoid a similar situation here. That might seem obvious, but say it anyway.
And Ashley here, um, it, you know, living, excuse me, living in Portland now and hearing a lot about the, the lawsuit that's happening. I think my biggest concern is that, you know, a lot of these houseless people that we're, we're speaking of and trying to find homes for are also disabled very often. And I think they're getting kind of left out of the conversation and more like demonized for it. Um, and so I think that's something that I would like to see Bend kind of acknowledge is that, like, you know, this is a marginalized community in, in multiple ways. And, you know, it would really be great if we had a conversation about how to serve people with disabilities who are also houseless.
Yeah, great point.
I echo that, Ashley's comment.
Yeah, if you guys do come up with any more ideas, just feel free to email me, uh, wi- with those, uh, and I'll, uh, formulate that for our discussion on Tuesday.
I also, I was contacted on the note of this, um, uh, Oasis Village, they're, they're creating, uh, like small tiny home pod kind of thing in Bend. Um, and they contacted me recently about helping them with accessibility. So I know that, you know, people are talking about it around the, the houseless community and, and trying to find ways to make things accessible. But I think they're, I don't know if they're nonprofit or how, I thi- I think that's typically how it works with these villages is that they have support of the city, but it's a nonprofit that does it. Um, but yeah, want to make sure that the city is also on board and it's not just a nonprofit carrying the weight.
Okay. Any other items during our round table here? Okay, uh, uh, council member, uh.
Thank you. Um, I will just say I've been in meetings around the core area, specifically talking about a potential Hawthorne Crossing. And Carl, you in particular, I wanted you to know that I heard your comments and am trying to make sure everybody understands that if we were to put something in like an elevator, thinking, wouldn't an elevator be great for someone? That, oh no, now that elevator is a huge obstacle if the power goes out. And considerations about if there's any kind of a switchback, the dimensions of that switchback. Um, in particular for recumbent bicycles, you talked about your hand pedal bikes. So I wanted to make sure you knew that. And then the, um, the Columbia Bridge, I spoke to our streets department. I talked to David Abis. Um, if I understand correctly, somebody has already been out to look at it. It sounds like exactly what you described. The one side, maybe the east side might have already been fixed. It maybe just needs shovels full of asphalt, but the other side is where it's going to take a piece of equipment to do that approach. Um, and he anticipates being able to get that done. Certainly by the time the asphalt plant closes for the winter. So yes, I think that will just be taken care of pretty quickly here.
Great.
Excellent. Well, um, I believe that's it for, uh, our COBAC meeting today, right? It's two thirty on the dot. Um, our next COBAC meeting is October twenty seventh, uh, two thousand twenty-two from noon to one thirty PM. Uh, and I'll also be here, hybrid meeting here in the council chambers as well as on Zoom. So with that, I will be adjourning our COBAC meeting here on September twenty second at two thirty-one PM. Thank you, everyone.